All right, moving on to 10.0, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Little.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I apologize for my voice. I do want to say, before we get started tonight, congratulations to the Gilbert High School baseball team for winning the first round of their state championship game.
Oh, wow.
I do, hold on just a second.
Last I heard, 10 to 1.
It was 14 to 4. 14 to 4.
Now, they play again Thursday night, correct?
They are, right?
Yeah, they play away.
It'll be on the road. So, congratulations to them, and we're going to hope that my voice is better by the first graduation ceremony, or the speech will certainly be much faster than normal. But, um, but thank you, everybody, for being here and for indulging me in that celebration. We're going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Salters, because we have a pretty significant transportation discussion to have. And, um, sorry.
And I can talk and you can't.
Absolutely, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Little. And so, tonight, I wanted to have a conversation with you about the bus transportation relocation facility. This was a bond referendum project, and I've got a brief presentation that I'd like to walk through with you, and have some folks from transportation here as well that are going to help me out with part of this as we go through. So, just to remind everyone what we're dealing with, this is the current Lexington Transportation Facility. This is Bar Road. Highway 1 is out here. Zooming in on the site, we operate the Lexington and River Bluff Transportation operation out of this area, generally, right here. This area is the state-owned maintenance facility for the Lexington area, and I guess you could say this is maybe where old buses go to die. Sometimes there are some old buses over here for parts and things like that. And so, just for your reference, as I show you these pictures, our main portable locations that we use as offices and training are located up in this area. And when you see a bunch of the water in some of the later pictures, that generally happens back in here, and maybe up along this side here where staff parks. It's a very limited site that we have leased over the years from the State Department. These are some kind of close-up shots of the current transportation main operation. They're using a portable. It's been out there prior to me coming in the district, and I think the portable is probably circa 1975-ish or something like that. This is the training portable that is currently used, you know, and you have a, you know, space. This is actually the only handicap-accessible location that we have on the site. This is an area for drivers to fill out paperwork, and there's a, that's a handicap training station there for our wheelchair security. Just some highlights of the flooring there that's coming up, and then some other shots of the restroom facilities and the exhaust, you know, system that's there. And this is a small office break space there. This is a, there's a lot going on in these pictures, I realize that, but this is the special needs office spaces. It's very, very tight, a number of folks working in this area. That's why you see all this plexiglass that has been put up over the last year. And again, all this is in portable classroom space. And here's some of the water I was alluding to. You can see towards the back of the site, I think it's maybe six or eight buses deep that you have to move whenever it hints of a rain, so that the buses don't flood. And we have our folks driving through this kind of water to get to a, you know, regular parking place that they can use, and then, you know, walking through significant amounts of water to get in and out of the, out of the facility. So, it's a really, really difficult situation there. So, you can see the need for a new facility. These are obviously not up to our standards. And then, just to remind you, the property that we purchased, centrally located in the River Bluff, Lexington, and White Knoll areas, you can see the mileage distance there from those three high school points. So, the idea is to serve all three school locations from this facility. Somehow, there was some conversation early on that got started online. I'm not sure how it started, but there was some conversation about possibly the Gilbert community being served out of this facility, and that's not in the plans. Actually, I'll show you a picture of Gilbert Bus Shop a little bit later on. So, just to be clear, it's these three lots that'll be relocated. The White Knoll High School lot, where the buses currently park, is part of, we talked a lot about SEDOT today, but it's part of a relocation there, where we need that space to extend the stacking loop in front of White Knoll High School. Back in year 2000, when White Knoll opened, there was no requirements for any kind of stacking loops in front of high schools, and they just had a, basically, a small drop-off that exists now. And so, now, you need that long stacking loop to get cars off of the road. And so, where the buses park at White Knoll is going to be used for that stacking as part of the renovations that are going on, on that campus. So, those buses are going to be relocated ultimately to this facility. Again, just to remind you quickly where this property is located, of course, we have, this is South Lake Drive, going out towards the Edmund and Pelean area, and then if you follow this on in, you would come up by the courthouse. This is Two Notch Road, and it probably sits right at, you know, the backside of the property's on I-20, and the front side has multiple access points to Two Notch Road. Just a little closer shot of the property. Again, we have this, this main access here, a secondary drive here, and then there's a third drive location here. There's a small wetland in the middle here. This is kind of the high ground of the property. It all slopes this way, and so, we'll make use of that, that wetland for stormwater mitigation as we develop the site. And our intent would be to develop the upper portion of the site at this point. And here's a rendering, early rendering of what the site might lay out like. You know, we have our, our main entrance, our major parking area for our employees, and then the combination of the two lots there with the, with the buses. And so, you get a really nice flow in and out of the building, and then you have your exit drive here for the buses to go run their routes. And so...
Will buses come in that same drive?
Uh, no, it'll be, it'll be entrance here, and then, and they'll come out here. This is an early rendering of the facility. We've had several iterations, but essentially, it'll have a similar footprint, probably will end up being more of a metal building look along the sides here, and then maybe have a brick facade on the front. But that's, that's, you know, scope and scale, that gives you an idea of kind of how big the, the building will be. And we've done some work. Mr. Kurtz and his team have done a lot of work with our architectural firm and our construction management at RISFirm to develop a schematic, and I showed you guys this early on when we were talking about the property. So, I'd like for Mr. Kurtz to spend a few minutes with you and just kind of talk to you about the scope of what is in the plans here. So, Mr. Kurtz, you can just use that microphone right there. Apologize, he's moving a little slow. He may have hurt his back yesterday. Putting a lid on a paint can is the story he told me, of all things. I would have, I think I would come up with a better story, but...
All right, thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I appreciate everything that the board is doing in SLT for the school district this year and everybody else in the school district. We did look at several different things when we're looking at coming into a new facility. Number one, if you notice toward the backup facility, we have maintenance bays. Currently, we have absolutely no maintenance bays to maintain our district buses, the state maintains state buses. But our district buses, we currently have 54. We've done a big investment of those since I came onboard in 2016. So, with the maintenance bays, we can start doing some, some more of a heavier maintenance on buses, instead of basically just changing out headlights and belts and things like that. Everything else that we have to do that becomes a major item, we work with state fleet and using their vendors, getting purchase orders, and having those repaired. Also, toward the back, we have some wash bays, which are covered areas. In talking with architects, we decided to get that put in, and it gives our drivers an opportunity to wash their buses and shade instead of outdoors, and different areas in the parking lot that you saw earlier. A lot of drivers would be fairly excited about that. Of course, everything would be right there, and they wouldn't have, be so spread out across the parking lot to try to, try to wash their buses. Another area that we're very excited about is the training rooms. The training room, currently, when we hold our week-long school bus driver training classes, we have to utilize other locations. And like I said, those classes are a week long, and a lot of times, it's very difficult to find a, a site that we can do a Monday-through-Friday class. So, this gives us an opportunity to be able to hold our classes at our particular site without having to go elsewhere. We've used the school district, we've used the libraries, so on and so forth, to get our classes taken care of. Another thing that we have done, we've done evening classes. In the past, when we did evening classes, we were at the mercy of the site that, that held it. We also had to have a staff member from our school to stay over, which really wasn't fair to the staff member. And we've also done some weekend classes, and it'd be nice to have our own facility, so someone didn't have to come in to their school to open it up for us to have a weekend class. As well as the training room could be used for local in-service meetings, which we have very limited space to do those, just for a regional, like the Lexington or White Knoll area, special needs. The CDL training could also be performed at one location instead of being at several different ones. Currently, we have to use White Knoll High School to do our commercial driver's license skills testing, and a lot of times, that does interfere with some events that White Knoll holds, and that would be at our facility, at this facility. Office space. The current facility is antiquated office space and small offices. Furthermore, I'm not trying to be selfish here, but my office has absolutely no privacy. I have no walls that go all the way up to the top. They stop about a foot and a half short. So, when I have to discuss something which is in a confidential nature, I have to go out to my vehicle and have that conversation. I've even had to do some Zoom meetings that were confidential by taking an iPad or a computer and going out there and doing that. In the other office, the Lexington office, the wall is very thin, not, you know, there's not too much privacy in discussing matters concerning a driver or things like that. And again, in my office, if I close the door, still doesn't matter, they can still hear me because of the wall. We also have added propane station, which is not in the schematic, but propane and diesel fueling. Propane, as you know, is a rare, is a new thing to us, and we're getting more propane buses, which the state has provided us a fueling station, which would be put there, and also, we'll be able to have our own diesel fueling station and not have to utilize the shop, which is extremely tight and cramped to be able to fuel the bus. Another thing that we're, that I'm excited about, and our drivers would be too, Jeff, if you don't mind going back to the previous slide, one more, there you go. On the gates that go, or the drives that go in and out, would be motorized gates that would open and close during the peak times, such as drivers coming in or leaving first thing in the morning, or, you know, from 1:00, 2:00 in the afternoon, the gates just be held open. But the lot would be more secured, because then, we could close the gates, but the drivers could use their ID to pull up and open them. They don't have to get out, undo a lock or anything like that, just pull up, wave it, and the gate will open. After hours, same thing, when they come back in from field trips, whether it be 7:00 in the evening, or, you know, we've had them come back in at 12 or 1:00 in the morning, all they'd need to do is just go ahead and activate the gate, and it'd open up, and as they drove through, the gate would close on its own. So, and then also, another thing, which a lot of our staff has talked about, drivers, is the employee parking. The employee parking, especially at the Lexington site, is very, very tight. Some of it does flood, so the employees have to move where they're parked. In this facility, the employee parking would be out front, which the employees would then walk in through the building and walk out the side door, going back to their bus. Currently, they park out in the bottom part of the parking lot, they walk about 150 yards up to the building, they get signed in, et cetera, et cetera, get their key, this, of course, before COVID, and then go back out to their bus when they return from their AM route, they do the same thing. So, at a minimum, four times a day, they're getting a pretty good walk, just to turn a key and get a key, and to sign in and sign out. This would greatly improve that process by them having employee parking in the front, the buses in the back, plus, we don't have buses and cars trying to co-mingle in a parking lot when they're all trying to, when a car might be trying to leave and a bus might be trying to leave, because sometimes, those won't turn out to be good circumstances. Again, very, very excited about the new facility. We have a lot of people just excited and wondering when we'll go start.
Thank you, Bill. And he's done a great job of kind of summarizing the scope changes that we've, we're looking at here. A couple of additional shots of some early renderings of, you know, some of these spaces that Bill highlighted there. And this is a flexible space. We have this type of space in our operations building, where you can put cubicles up, and it works really well to grow your office space. And so, just, you know, kind of recap, in the referendum, we had a budget, initial budget of about $3 million for a central Lexington area facility, and the building scope was based on a small office space similar to Gilbert or Pelean. And then, of course, a parking lot to house the buses of the Lexington, River Bluff, and White Knoll areas. I just wanted to take a minute to show you kind of what the, the scope of that might look like, and this is the Gilbert area facility, and the Pelean one looks very similar. The building is, you know, less than 1,000 square feet, and has a little entrance area here, and then there's, you know, kind of a workspace, there's a little kitchenette area, which is kind of highlighted here. And then additionally, there are two offices located in, in that same space. It's a very small space, crowded space. And so, you know, that's the kind of scope and scale of what the facility study actually included. So, it was really kind of a, what I would call a scope disconnect there, and it was our expectations were one thing, and the contractor had a very different understanding of what we were looking for. And so, really, so what that does is it brings us to two, two options. And, you know, we're talking about these tonight, we'd like for you to kind of think about them, process them over the next few weeks, certainly reach out and ask any additional informational questions you think of after we leave. But option one would be to, to basically build a structure similar to the Gilbert or Pelean offices, as was included in the, in the referendum, kind of as a phase one, and then you'd have to follow up in the future with, with additional phases to that project. And we need to continue to use office spaces at White Knoll and possibly the current Bar Road site, because you just wouldn't have enough space available to do that. Option two would be to increase the, the budget for the facility, go ahead and build it all at once. You know, we anticipate approximately about a $6.5 million additional funding need to cover the, the additional scope that Mr. Kurtz has done a good job of highlighting. And then, you know, if you choose option two, we would, we would recommend, again, we've talked about this bond premium earlier tonight, we'd recommend funding this out of that bond premium that we have available. Additionally, we've, we've been approached about selling a portion of the land off, and so, we would, just to give you a perspective, I'm going to go back here real quick. What we would look at is if a person was interested, we would look at this lower portion of the site here, and this ingress, ingress point here as a potential that we could sell off, if the board was interested in that. Certainly, that's a process that we would have to go through, but if, if that, you know, came to fruition, that would offer you some additional revenue that, you know, could be used to offset some of the, some of the gap there in the scope. So, basically, those are the two options we, we have to present to you tonight, and, you know, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about those two options for your consideration.
I just have a question for the board. Has any board member been out to tour any transportation facilities at Lexington, Gilbert, Pelean, after they've been completed? None?
No.
Okay. So, Mr. Kurtz, thank you for that presentation. I don't think there's any denying that a new transportation facility is needed. However, I just got to say, I'm mad. I am so mad. I'm mad that for 15 to 20 years, this transportation facility has been in disrepair, and only when there's a $6.5 million mistake is anybody allowed to talk about it. Otherwise, all the bus drivers are told, "Don't talk about it, we don't have any money, we can't do anything." So, they've been rolling up their pants legs for years when the parking lot's flooded, just to get on their bus. They've been working out of multi-portables for years, because they couldn't get any attention. And we got a transportation facility that was supposed to be open in three months, and we're just now discovering that there was some miscommunication three years ago that changes everything. Option one, I don't really see as an option. You can't build a transportation facility in phases any more than you can build a school in phases, and you can't steal from one project in the referendum to put money towards another project. I know we've been told the early childhood centers have been put on hold while we figure out what to do about this. So, it's the board's job to figure out where the money is coming from here. The ballot said that we had to renovate and demo Gilbert Elementary School and Pelean Middle School, so you got to do that, period. That's what the ballot said on the bond referendum. Now, if this board had been doing their job all along, and if they had approved projects from leftover funds, as was stated on that ballot, then the people that, the people that voted on that, instead of allowing the district to spend that money as they see fit, which, by the way, wasn't even reported to us, we don't know where the leftover funds of any project have gone, we would have additional funds at our disposal. But here we are, and here are our options. And so, if we're looking at how we're going to come up with the money, I have several, several, several ideas, but one of those is not selling a portion of the land, because we're only going to grow in buses. So, we're going to need that land eventually. And also, Mr. Kurtz, I talked to Mr. Salters last week, just looking at that site rendering, I don't think that office is big enough. I mean, like y'all, they showed pictures of Gilbert, and, I mean, it's crowded in Gilbert, and I'd hate to see the same thing happen at that place when it's completed. And I see the training facility there, but there are bus drivers in the office all day long, every day. They're either coming from a shuttle, going to a shuttle, you know, starting the kindergarten route, there's a kitchen. I mean, they eat in there, they basically live in there, and there's somebody going all the time. So, just based on that drawing, I mean, I don't even think that place is big enough for what's needed, but that's, you know, I guess, a conversation for the board to have. But that's just my two cents worth.
If I could just clarify one point, any savings that has been achieved on any project in the bond referendum to date, 2018 referendum, is sitting at that facility and has not been repurposed for additional needs at other locations. So, I just want to make sure we understand that.
Well, not necessarily at other locations, but just say, the Lexington High School bond referendum, we didn't have the repair to the breezeway that was included in those referendum funds, but after there was money left over, was that project not completed?
We did, we did replace the breezeway connection to LTC.
Right, okay.
Can you go back to the slide of the layout of the building? Yep, 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 thank you. Can you give us an idea on, on day-to-day, and this one's for you, Bill, can you, can you give us an idea of like, day-to-day usage? What does this look like? I mean, take, for example, that classroom, is this a, we're going to use it 10 times a year, we're going to use it 20 times a year? Just an idea of what day-to-day operations looks like out of this building?
Well, the classroom itself, we could, we hopefully will be using it at least twice a month for school bus driver training classes, but also, the supervisors can bring in their drivers to do individualized-type training. The drivers also, when it's not in use for training, could be using that as a workstation area, if they need to get updated on their paperwork, their, their routing reports and things like that, they'd be more welcome to be able to utilize that area.
Gotcha, gotcha. So, you would, it would be used frequently?
Right.
Is, is a good way to put it?
We're not going to lock the doors and only open it twice a week, or twice a month, and, you know, it'll, it'll be open to be accessible every day.
And as far as the maintenance that we're doing now on the buses, it's just, they're very much one-alls, very simple, simple kind of things, it's not terribly complex. This would obviously expand our scope of ability to maintain the buses, is that a fair statement?
Correct. We can do much more detailed inspections on our own, instead of having them farmed out, to have a garage to do them. Also, we can do some more detailed maintenance on the buses that we're unable to do at our current location. Some of your heavier items, like an engine replacement, if that ever happened, would probably go somewhere else.
Sure, sure.
But, you know, we would be able to improve our maintenance program on our buses. We currently do have a rather new fleet, and of course, when you have a new fleet, you don't normally have a lot of problems, but what we find in our newer buses that we have, and also that the state has, for some reason, newer-type vehicles have more electronic issues than they do mechanical issues.
Does propane change that?
Huh?
Does propane, with, with the advent of the propane buses, does that change our frequency of inspections and things that have to occur? I just, I'm unfamiliar with the fuel system, so I...
Well, the propane, all the propane buses are state buses.
Right.
We, we would not be maintaining them, but we do have to fuel them and have a fueling station for them. Right now, the propanes are on the located at Gilbert and at Wa, I'm sorry, at Lexington and at White Knoll. Currently, the White Knoll drivers, when they utilize the propane buses, they normally put them on a shuttle to go to LTC, and they come by on either, when they're empty, going or coming from, to come by the bus shop to fuel their buses, whereas Lexington, the tank is right there. With the new facility, obviously, everybody's right there, so there's no, no extra deadhead or travel time to go fuel.
Gotcha, gotcha.
If I could add to something Mr. Kurtz said with respect to the maintenance, we are fortunate that over the past few years, our district-owned buses have become newer and newer, and so, one would say within your maintenance costs should go down, and that, I would agree with that when you're talking about big-ticket items, engine replacements and things, but if we have more regularly scheduled maintenance, like you would on your own automobile, then we can hopefully keep them longer and, and avoid those, those costly, big-ticket repairs down the line, and this lends itself to that much better than what we have now.
An ounce of prevention.
Exactly.
Yeah, you know, Ms. Harris, I can certainly appreciate the passion. You know, I, I think at, at the end of the day, we just find ourselves with a $6.5 million question, you know? And for me, I appreciate this being brought as a deliberative process that allows us to see some options, to kind of hear from boots on the ground, you know, this is what you get for 3 million, this is what you get for 9.5 million, here's the considerations. And so, I appreciate that. I think that is, that's a good step forward for us, and it, it gives us a lot of clarity on kind of what we're spending the money on. Okay? I guess our job at the end of the day is figure out where the money's coming from. So, Mr. Salters, I would probably offer up, you know, if we could look at a waterfall-type method for how we would approach funding of an item like this. So, we start building this thing, when would we start building it roughly, if we had to guess?
When would we start?
Yeah, rough estimate.
Probably, I would have to say at this point, probably August.
Okay. So, when will we start writing the first check?
Probably right around that time.
Okay. And so, by that, when we look at a waterfall-type funding method, you know, your first part of money is going to come, obviously, from bond referendum, and the money's allocated that. Next one would be any excess that we have from, from other projects, and the freedom that we have to do that. Secondly, would, you know, if we have operations budget excess, that, that allows us to shift those funds over. Um, secondly, would, you know, if we have operations budget excess, that that allows us to shift those funds over. Um, thirdly, now that we have ESTR funding, that's gotta play into the equation a little bit. But I don't think we have all of those answers yet of of what we can and cannot do quite yet. But I guess my concern there is with ESTR funding, that's a real temptation for us to to run ourselves into a financial cliff three, four, or five years from now, um, for which I would hate to see the district or future boards set up for that. And so if if we had some flexibility to to use the ESTR funding in a way that would, um, very much be one-offs, so you bring up about the the pre-K, um, upfits and those kind of things, that's not something we envision as being a recurring cost, you know, even compared to technology, which I I'm a huge fan of technology, but we're gonna have to refresh those devices in three to five years. We just know that. Um, so even looking at the ESTR funding for that. And then lastly, bond premium, you know? Because I'll admit, when when I see a capital fund of, uh, about seven million, I mean, it doesn't take long for us with, you know, thirty schools, thirty-one schools to to quickly go through seven million. And so the more we can kind of have in that reserve, I think the better off we are. So so my question would be, and and obviously not an answer tonight, but, you know, w- what would a waterfall method look like if, based off of timing? Because we still gotta write checks.
Sure.
And we know that we're not gonna know bond referendum excess for this many years. Um, we're not gonna know operations budget until this time of year. So what flexibility do we have with with a waterfall-type method, uh, based off the timing that this project would have to be completed?
Sure. We we can definitely put that together for you.
That would be helpful. Um, I agree. I I mean, I I think this would be a huge step forward. I would not be in favor of selling property, to be quite frank. Um, I think, uh, based off of growth, uh, this is is something that that would be needed. Um, but at the same time, correct me if I'm wrong, this would also serve the other schools as well, not just the ones who park buses there. Is is that correct? So from a training perspective, from maintenance, whatever it may be, this would serve the entire district, not just the three schools we identified?
Correct. The the, the training would serve, you know, all all areas. And just to let you know, too, when we put on a school bus driver training class, um, you know, we we've had them come as far away as ORE County, uh, to the class. Um, Lexington Five, a lot of times, the only two districts to have a, uh, driver trainer classroom trained with State Department education is Lexington One, Lexington Five. None of the other Lexington's do. So a lot of times, you know, we'll we'll teach a class, they'll teach a class, we'll teach a class, they'll teach a class. And the other districts in the area, uh, including Aiken, ORE, we've had Darlington, uh, Spartanburg, they they've sent people to the class because they didn't have any available in their area. Uh, and, you know, we're not gonna turn anybody away, even though they don't work for us.
So it's offering additional support for surrounding districts who who maybe don't have the the luxury of this, is that correct?
Now, we don't do the training on the people from there. We just do the classroom part, so, and then we concentrate just on our people. Uh, but, you know, the, that does serve the entire district, not just those two zones. The maintenance of the district buses, uh, all those, all those buses can go to any school in the district, uh, Peay and Gilbert, White Knoll, you know, Pleasant Hill, Midway. It it doesn't matter that, you know, that they're for the district to be able to use.
Well, and I think that's an important point because sometimes it can be as challenging to make decisions in a time of abundance as it is in a time of scarcity, you know? And unfortunately, because of the the work that has been done, uh, throughout the history of Lexington One, we find ourselves in a place of abundance. Um, and so it, it's still a six and a half million dollar question to answer, but we're even fortunate to be able to ask the question, quite frankly. So, well, thank you.
Re- remind me how many, uh, school bus driver openings we have currently? Ballpark? Five, fifty?
Last count was thirty-two.
Would this facility help you hire, retain, train bus drivers?
Yes, sir. We've had people come to our current facility and leave.
Yeah. So again, I would be in favor of doing it right and being done with it to help.
Until that point, Dr. Powers, because that's anecdotal and it's hard to to say with certainty. But I I would have to believe that folks would come to Lexington One or come to Lexington One now, go to the Bar Road, Bar Road facility and go, really? This is, I mean, it's it's really third-world country type of facility. So I I don't, we don't have, I don't have any hard and fast data on that. But I would have to suspect that people would probably choose to go elsewhere, given the choice, because, you know, um, having a a safe and secure and attractive facility attracts people. And I think that's one of the strong points of, uh, as my wife and I were driving through, um, coming back from, uh, the upstate a couple of weeks ago, and we rode by by Beechwood. And she made the comment about how wonderful all of our facilities are. Uh, and I think there's one glaring exception to that. And and hopefully, we're moving to 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 get that rectified.
And I wanted to, um, a suggestion and a question. Um, so just in the spirit of how we tend to, our, um, naming of things has evolved, instead of calling that a classroom, call it a collaborative space? Because all the things you described are more what we were use, we're seeing in our schools, where, you know, it could be a large group setting, or it can be individuals working independently, or it can be teen. Uh, that's just a a silly suggestion, but really what you described is more of a collaborative space than a classroom. Um, and then my, and this is also just like off the top of my head. Every time I see this rendering and hear the description of it, I can't help but think about the, um, is it Richland Two or Richland One that's offering the CDL class now? Uh, certification for students? And if maybe in the future, I mean, this facility seems prime opportunity for us to expand our LTC courses into something like that, that, um, I know the, whichever Richland School District is doing it, um, the demand has been very high. Um, and this just seems like a great opportunity down the road to maybe look into that. Um, I would say Dr. Tally, but I'll say Mary Gaskin. Um, so just, just an idea, because I really do think that there's a, uh, some untapped opportunity here that we can use to benefit our students in a different way. So. Anyone else with any questions for Mr. Salters or Mr. Kurtz?
Um, I just wanted to clarify. Kyle, I think you were asking, maybe you were assuming that that training facility right there is for all of the drivers. But what that is, is they train new drivers who come in to take the CDL. So.
Sure, sure.
There's a couple of times, there's only a couple of times a year that all the drivers come together. And that's at in-service. And they would still have to go out to a different location.
Right.
That's big enough to hold all of them. They still wouldn't be able to meet there that, during in-service, that one time a year.
Yeah, I I guess the point, or the the point of clarification was that while we're only housing three schools worth of buses, this space is actually being used district-wide to to serve new new bus drivers from a training perspective, those kind of things. Um, the only other thing I would offer up is is maybe, um, um, uh, you made one comment that that honestly didn't kind of sit right when you, when you talked about being selfish about your your office space. And I would say, no, no, I I don't think you're being selfish, you know, to have walls that go to the ceiling and, you know, not have to go out to your car and and do those kind of things. Because you you do find yourself in situations where you probably do have to have difficult conversations and things like that. So so I I would just offer up that that that's not a self-serving purpose. I think it, um, it serves both the the district as well as your needs. Um, and so, uh, we appreciate it, you know? We we hate that you've done that, but obviously, we've been confined to the space that we've had and and so on and so forth. But but we appreciate it.
And that's, if you have any say-so in the final design, that's something, looking at those renderings, where there's cubicle spaces, I don't think it's been taken into account that there are different, uh, radio frequencies for different bus lots. And having more than one attendance area in that bus lot, like, you're gonna be able to hear one radio over here and a different one over here if they're all combined. So that may be something else y'all wanna take into consideration is having more privacy among those offices, so that there's not so much chaos in there.
Transportation's not chaotic.
That's funny.
You know, before we close, if you don't mind, I would like to, uh, recognize George Blackwell is here tonight with us. He is the coordinator of transportation, and he really does all the work. Bill's just a mouthpiece. But, uh, I wanna thank both of these guys and and their team for what they do.
Thank you.
I will say Mr. Blackwell was my supervisor when I was hired, and it was a pleasure working for him.
And y'all have only had to redesign bus schedules and routes this year like seventeen times. So, you know, it's been an easy year, right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Little, do you have anything else in your report?
Ma'am, I don't.
If you did, would you be able to say it?
No, ma'am, I won't.
Um, all right, we are at eleven point oh. I just wanted to make a couple real quick comments. Um, we've had a lot, this, you know, it's the end of the year and things are starting to get back to normal. And so we've had some, um, fun things to participate in. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Oswald and Ms. Garris attended the FFA banquet in Pillion, um, last week. Um, and that's always a highlight. Uh, Ms. Henson and I attended the special ed graduation, which is, um, I always say, one of my very favorite events every year. Um, and it's just so special to be a part of that. Um, I know a number of us, um, have served as panelists for passages and capstone presentations um, and other student, um, spotlight activities like that. And so that's been a a great way to wrap up the year, to actually, you know, start interacting with the students again, um, because that's really why all of us are in this room right now, is the students. Um, I would like to remind everyone that our high school graduation ceremonies begin next week on June eighth. Um, and the board would like to congratulate the graduating class of 2021. We could not be more proud of these seniors who have navigated a challenging school year. Um, congratulations to all of the graduates, and we look forward to celebrating with you next week, um, at eight AM at each of your respective, uh, football stadiums. And I just want to take a moment to say, we've made it to June. It's June. I feel like that it's been a long time coming, but that is definitely something to celebrate. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Uh, is there a second? All in favor? Go home. Thank you very much.